Phil Kowal, Sally Ritchard.
President.
Phil Giffens.
Here.
Phil Ham.
President.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
We have, the clerk is on our call today, but I would like to ask for approval of minutes from the previous meeting.
We approve the minutes from page fifty-seven.
Aye, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. I do want to make the announcement at this time that our minutes are being recorded and for people that are online, if you're online, you're given your permission that minutes will be recorded, and if you're online and you wish to speak, please state your name and address, as do the people in the room who would like to speak. So moving right along, let's go to unsafe building update. Chuck?
Chuck DeWitt, the Building Commissioner for Town of Culver. Wanted to bring you up to date on where we're at in the pursuit of excellence in our town. Not an unsafe, but something that everybody's interested about is the house on State Street, the Burns House. That has been lowered twelve inches. They have one foot off the bottom of the top floor and lowered it down. I took a measurement, verified it, and it is at our thirty-five feet maximum.
Good.
So I've got verification.
Okay.
So we can keep that on file.
Good.
Good.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm glad.
Yeah, thank you, and at least it didn't fall down when that was happening.
I was concerned, they, it took them about a day or day and a half for prep, and then it took them eleven hours to actually, on that day, to get it down. Cutting off the, finishing, cutting off the studs. Cranking it down with jacks, they had twenty-seven jacks up there. Each one a half to turn at a time, and it was quite an ordeal, but it's done. And now it's, I don't have anything else I'd better do on that. It's up to the building inspector to make sure that they've got it fastened correctly, tight. I did have a meeting with him, spoke to him about concerns, and what I would be looking at, and so he's been down there twice, looking at it, making sure that that's all done.
Good. Chuck, this is Russ. I have a question. Did, uh...
In court, correct on that?
Yes. He has an attorney, and there, we're working on an agreement to try and bring in compliances. He's been by there slowly, progressing.
We, we have...
I, I use the word progressing somewhat hesitantly, but...
We do have a roof on the house, which...
Yeah.
Was really bad. Keep, keep me involved in however you can, or you need...
Oh, okay.
You know, whatever you need me to do, if you need me to come out, take a tour of the old road, I'll definitely...
Okay.
Good.
We have the Bozma property out on West Jefferson.
Right.
Now, the, the building burned, right, in last year. Trying to work with Mr. Bozma in getting things cleaned up, he's made some attempts, but as he told me before, he's low on funds and out of money because he was off work during the time he's trying to build up some reserves, but at this point, we've given him our, I think, as much time as we need to, and more than we could, but, so, sending him a letter, giving him thirty days to bring it into compliance or to be... We just take it forward.
Okay.
So that's my recommendations to the council.
Do you want to motion on that effect, or...
No move.
Okay. Motion's been made inside to write Mr. Bozma a thirty-day letter to clean up the fire burnt building on West Jefferson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next.
Help me out here. The house torn down about a year and a half ago. The foundations told that they couldn't take it out because they're planning on building. Then we went to the building committee. At this time, this period, and I say that we send them a fifteen-day letter and either have that torn out and covered in, or... So this needs to, it's a hazard. Yeah. There was a dumpster. I noticed their window. It is, so the window is...
Is that just recently?
So I want to end that call. College Avenue, you want to talk about?
Jenny, please. Jenny, please check the chat.
All right.
Thank you, Chuck.
Next, is it Dr. Paul Pranik? Please step forward.
Hi, good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Say your name and address, please.
First name is Jean, J A N, last name is Pranik. P R A N I K. Home address ten eleven North, you can please, just... So just a little background, I'm new to Culver, new to lake and boat life. My daughter's attending Culver in the... Joining in a couple of years. So we bought a house here on Forest Place, and I'm looking at getting a boat. I got a slip rental through the Park District. And I know the limitation is twenty-four foot, so I've been shopping twenty-four-foot pontoons, and the one I'm looking at, it's a nice boat, looks like a good price, I'd like to buy it. It's listed on the title, it's twenty-four feet four inches. I wanted to make sure that that was going to be okay before I made the purchase.
Well, I think you talked to our park superintendent, Amber, and she's explained, and you have signed the lease agreement, and you paid for the boat slip.
Right.
And it states in there, under item number three, new boats must be twenty-four feet in length or less as of two thousand nineteen. And, and an exception for you, sir, we'd have to make an exception for other people. So, I think our opinion that we've got to stay by these rules. You can't make variations off of them, and, you know, you've got several options. I know you... And, you know, and you finally got the top of the list. So, you know, your options are, you know, get a boat that fits within less than twenty-four feet, or, you know, not take the boat slip and, of course, we would refund somebody. And then if we did that, you go back to the bottom of the list. So, you know, I think it's council's point. It's going to need to be less than twenty-four feet.
Okay. So if we make an exception on four inches, doesn't seem like a lot, but if we make an exception, or goes on behind that, it, it sort of becomes the problem.
Thanks. Thank you very much for coming, sir.
Thank you.
Didn't get that audio?
Plugged in here, looks like so.
We left this, this black line, it's...
Yeah, this...
Can you plug that?
I don't guess there's...
Yeah, it's this white cord that I'm concerned about.
Right, no, they're plugged in.
It's plugged in? Okay, then we're good. I just want to make sure because Karen's saying the audio's not good.
We need the black one plugged in?
No, that's the television.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I didn't know.
No, no sweat. No sweat.
Somebody may have jostled something, because she said it now sounds better. This is good. Thank you.
Moving right along. Next is five-thirty South Ohio, which is more commonly known as the Evil Check property. As y'all know, that property's been sitting vacant now for well over a year, and the town owns the property, and we need to do some things with it. I do know that Bob Porter has contacted Peerless, who, one of the uses of that property is we need to do town well, and that's one of the places that we look to maybe put that well. So Peerless is coming out Monday, it's coming Monday to do drilling to see what the aquifer down below, if it's sufficient to go ahead and add a new well. In addition to that, we need to talk about just leveling that building. As y'all know from the last meeting, Jenny and Rich took people from the food bank down there because they thought they might look at that building to move the food bank there. But they saw the building and said, eh, that ain't going to happen. It's, it's in bad, bad shape. So we're just lucky that the outside looks good, but there's no, nothing salvageable inside that we know of. What restaurant equipment is still there. We can take and get it recycled, so I would like to entertain the council, and if they would like to move to move forward with, present that building. I did talk to Bob today. He thinks it's going to take about ten dumpsters. Dumpsters are five hundred bucks a piece, and he needs to get heavy equipment to knock down the building, and that's two thousand a week, so minimum is some thousand dollars probably to do it. And, you know, I'd like to see if we could have moved to...
And most of that building is on a slab, sorry, in terms of taking that out, it's not necessarily a hazard, but the section that, with the goo section, has some irregular, I mean, there are some large troughs and like two-foot-deep...
Right.
...troughs, so I mean, I think if we're going to do it, we either have to fill those in, especially after what we talked about recently with foundations just a few hundred yards from there, to be consistent on that. But, I mean, I'd be willing to make a motion that we approve demolishing that building for an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars, with the understanding that the remaining site be left in a safe condition.
Is there a second?
Aye, second.
Motion's been made, moved and seconded to reserve ten thousand dollars to remove the building at five-thirty South Ohio Street, the Evil Check property. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Go ahead, sir. An addendum to that, and a point of information, we did have an architectural, a preliminary architectural study done on that building, and the amount it would require to make it habitable would be, you know, cost prohibitive with the existing building, so that's just, and we did have some study on that, we can have professional opinion on, on that, depending as it influences our decision.
I would think that there's some salvage value in some of the metal and stainless and so forth in that.
I'm comfortable with ten thousand.
And, and, you know, if fire or EMS, you know, or even Bob want to get in there and take those metal serving tables and things like that, if they can use them somewhere else, maybe Amber, you could use some of that at the Beast Lodge, I don't know, you know, downstairs in the basement, you know, please go through there and, you know, Bob will take that stuff out and whatever's left, which is really, I think, the main part of those two freezers or refrigerators, you know, those are going to just go to recycle and we'll get pennies on the dial.
I have a question, is there any soil contamination with that?
We don't know, we don't know at this time.
Has there ever been a gas station or anything like that?
I don't, somebody who's lived here is going to have to answer that one.
Bed store.
Bed store?
Bed store.
From an accounting standpoint, do you want this to come out of, we didn't budget for it, so do you want this to come out of general fund or...
Then we have, then we have a safe building.
For unsafe buildings, I don't know if you want to call it the same thing.
Well, we, I would say whatever Karen would recommend, taking it out of.
If we're going to end up putting in a new well there, and we may end up requiring grant proposal for that, would it make it, sense to make that part of the, you know, part of the, for putting in the well? It would be part of a water project improvement, I would think.
Right. We won't qualify for water until, till the water plant is up, it'd be five years if we went for an Ocre grant, if it's been five years since we did the water plants and tower, but you would not want to tear this down yet if you were going for a grant, including the whole property, because with that type of grant, you have to do an aggregate project. So if they want to be a grant, if you plan for it, you need something ahead of time, something success, it is one big aggregate project, so they wouldn't want to, they wouldn't have, they wouldn't want you to do it in this particular case. So Karen is saying that unsafe building fund is probably our best bet for taking ten thousand out of it.
And there was a gas station next to it, with real estate.
That's where the real estate...
Yeah.
Company is, yeah.
Real estate was Barstool's gas station.
Yeah. The old Sicko Station. So I don't know if there might have been any leakage, because, I mean, that's been...
If you're going to add a well there.
Well, we're going to have to do some, so, and all that, yeah.
If you do do a grant, they would do an environmental study. I just stopped now, if they would approve of a grant if you've already torn the building down. So...
Good.
I don't think we qualify for another year, though, I think we're going into our fifth year.
Well, and I think Karen also said something about the stimulus money that is going to be coming in, that maybe part of it can be used there also. So, you know, but we just need to start somewhere.
Yeah.
And show some progress.
And even if we don't qualify for the grant this year, i- if it's another year and you've taken it down, you'd be okay, because there'd be a lapse of time there.
Anybody else? Okay, let's move on to...
Excuse me, before we leave that one, and Bill, improve the questions, as far as disposal of some of the equipment in the building there. As part of our motion to demolish the building, can we include the right to dispose of town-owned equipment?
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that, I'm...
Say what?
It's, it's part of the, part of the motion to demolish the building is authorization for us to dispose of town-owned assets, so those tables in there, if you don't, you know, if you're using them in departments here, to either give them away or to do something with them, I think you probably need the demolition station from the council to dispose of an asset that's town-owned, even though there may not be...
Do you want to put that, is it an amendment to your motion, or...
If you do an ass, if you're saying they're assets...
And you're disposing of them, you're going to have to advertise them or auction them off.
If you want to consider that they're trash...
If you're considering trash, then they don't make a difference.
Yeah.
Right.
You're, yeah, if it's salvage and it's, it's got some value, it's, then you can't just give it away. You're, you're, you can salvage it, get the money.
Do you want to authorize Bob to salvage whatever can be salvaged and throw away what else, what can't be salvaged?
Well, but June said, if we salvage it, then it's testing.
Well, no, if he can, he can, if he's going to salvage it, he can take it to wherever he can...
Recycle.
Yeah, he can take it to a salvage yard and get a check for whatever they'll give him.
Okay, do we need to amend the motion?
I wouldn't.
You would not?
I wouldn't think.
I don't think so.
I wouldn't think so either.
Okay.
Unless you're telling me what they do.
That, that was in the motion.
I wrote it down.
When I made the motion.
That was in there. We understood it that way.
Okay. The sequencing of the environmental studies, I think we would want to know...
Oh, sure.
Before we spend all this money.
Well, but, yeah, but once...
If we can't put a well there...
Yeah, right, but we need a clean piece of property, period.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and that's, that's the goal here, is to get it, everything leveled, and then if the well can't go in or whatever...
We'd do something else with it.
We'd do something else, and then we, we go forward.
Right.
So, but step one...
Does, does Peerless check for contaminants?
I don't believe that... Bob, are you online? Bob said he would be online. Bob Porter, Porter, are you online?
Yeah, he, well, he's sitting right down on his phone. He's not...
Peerless would know if there's...
Yeah, I would think that they...
Potential for a problem.
Yeah.
Well, at this point, we, at this point, we've lost Bryce tearing down the building, and then Peerless committed to an assessment.
Yeah.
If it needs to go further than that, then we can stand position on that later.
I'll talk to Bob and then get back to you guys on that.
Next, we have ordinance twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one dash oh seven, amending the salary ordinance. And it states, an ordinance to the Town of Culver, amending the salary ordinance for the year twenty-twenty-one. Whereas the Culver Town Council has previously enacted ordinance twenty dash oh twelve, being the salary ordinance for the year twenty-twenty-one, and passed ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash oh three, amending the twenty-twenty-one salary ordinance. And whereas, since passage of said ordinance, it has been determined that changes need to be made with respect to the Building Commissioner and employee benefits, therefore, be it ordained by the Town Council of the Town of Culver, Indiana, as follows. Section one, ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash zero zero three, is hereby amended in the following particulars. Change the pay of the position of Town Manager to three thousand, three forty-six, fifteen, biweekly stipend. B, change the vacation time to three weeks in twenty-twenty-one and thereafter. And C, changes will be effective upon passage. Section two, with the exception of the changes made herein, all of the balance of said ordinance twenty dash oh one two and twenty twenty-one dash zero zero three is hereby approved, ratified, and confirmed in its entirety. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second to approve ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash zero zero seven on first read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Motion to approve on second, sir.
Motion's been made to approve on ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash zero zero seven on second read, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there a fair, is there... Motion's been made in seconded. Is there a fair, is there? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Oh, second and third. I'm sorry. Thank you, Sally.
Should we just go ahead and do the third?
Sure. Let's go ahead.
I'll make the motion to approve on third. This is our end of rules.
Second, the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules and approve on third reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next is ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero zero eight, amending the golf cart ordinance. Do you want me to read the whole thing?
Just the amended parts.
And the amended.
They should be in a different font color.
Well, help me with red, since I'm colorblind.
Okay.
Next time I'll have to put a star on it.
This is red. You could start with that sentence. I can show you where the other one is.
Basically, there's two changes. One is requiring a driver's license to drive a golf cart. And the second change, we currently have that you cannot drive a golf cart on a sidewalk or trail. Additional change is you cannot park a golf cart on a sidewalk or trail as well. Those are the two changes.
Okay. Ordinance twenty twenty-one day zero zero eight, in section two, it states, uh, driver of such golf cart must have a valid driver's license. And in section five, it says golf carts are not to be driven or parked on the public sidewalks or trails. Those are the changes to ordinance twenty twenty-one day zero zero eight.
Question for the chair. Just, they're also in there something, but if you're suspended, um, you cannot drive a golf cart.
If you have to have a valid license.
That's the valid license, I would say. And it, and it's, and I mean, it would be included under that, I'm sure, Bill. Okay, is there a motion to approve the amendments to ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero zero eight as read?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Bill and seconded by Bill H. to, uh, approve the amendments as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Same sign. Motion carries. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Still moved.
On second and third reading?
Still moved. Second.
Motion was made to suspend the rules and approve ordinance twenty twenty-one day zero zero eight on second and third reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, we have emergency services week proclamation.
There are two of them there.
Right. Uh, do the first one first since, uh, they are here with our, uh, first one is proclamation to designate May nine through sixteen, twenty twenty-one as National Police Week. Would our police department please rise and be recognized? And would you please? Starting with Chief Bean, would you please recognize your staff?
I'd like to introduce my assistant, Chad Becker back here.
And the proclamation reads, whereas in nineteen sixty-two, President Kennedy proclaimed May fifteenth as National Peace Officers Memorial Day and the calendar week in which May fifteenth falls as National Police Week. And whereas the members of the law enforcement agency of the town of Culver play an important role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of our community, community. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve and protect all members of the community. And whereas the members of the Culver Police Department provide an unceasingly vital public service. And now therefore, I, Bill Githen's Town Council President of the Town of Culver, State of Indiana, do hereby recognize the week of May nine through sixteen, twenty twenty-one as National Police Week and extend appreciation to our police chief Wayne Bean, Officer Chad Becker, and Officer Alex Zerby, as well as rookies Nick Forward and Devin Watkins, to all law enforcement for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the community they serve. Witnessed by my hand and seal of Culver this eleventh day of May, twenty twenty-one. Thank you for your service and congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you.
You may be seated.
Do you want to take a motion to authorize your signature?
Yeah.
Motion to approve that proclamation and authorize the council to sign on behalf of the council.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made in second to approve the proclamation designated May nine through sixteen, twenty twenty-one as National Police Week and authorize me to sign the proclamation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
I do want to say thank you to the council. It's been a pretty trying fourteen months for us and really appreciate the support that the town's given us through that, through the new hiring and I want to especially thank my assistant who stuck by me with a lot of this. The newcomers are coming into quite the world of law enforcement today.
We're forcing it to have you, Wayne, and we're forcing it to have a, you know, soon to have a full staff. So thank you.
We're working a good community. Hopefully, worries from here.
Job well done, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have another one, which is.
Yes. Jeff couldn't be here tonight because he had a prior engagement with the son, so.
Okay. We have a proclamation to designate May sixteen through twenty-second, twenty twenty-one as National EMS Week. Whereas in nineteen seventy-four, President Ford proclaimed the week, third week of May every year as National Emergency Services Week. And whereas the members of the emergency medical services of the town of Culver play an important role in providing free hospital care to the residents and visitors of our community. And whereas emergency medical services care for their communities and are first, fast, and fearless in the flight, fight along with their partners in the public safety, Culver Police and Culver Fire. And whereas the members of the Culver EMS went above and beyond in caring for the community as they also encouraged and courageously faced an ever-changing pandemic that not only put themselves in potential danger, but unknowingly their families as well. And now therefore, I, Bill Githen's Town Council President of the Town of Culver, State of Indiana, do hereby recognize the week of May sixteen through twenty-second, twenty twenty-one as National Emergency Services Week and extend appreciation to the paramedics and EMTs and to all emergency service personnel to the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the community they serve. Witnessed my hand and seal in Town of Culver, Indiana, eleventh day of May, twenty twenty-one. Is there a motion to approve this proclamation and authorize me to sign it?
Second.
Motion's been made by Bill C. and seconded by Bill H. to approve the proclamation and authorizing me to sign it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. Sorry that Jeff can't be here. They too provide a vital service. And I think we, even in Jeff's absence, we need to give him a round of applause. Thank you. Okay. Next. Lake Max Trail Phase Three memorandum, understanding.
Yeah, Jim has the draft complete for us and I'm thinking we'll go through it, uh, together, run it by Culver Academies and present it formally at the next meeting if we get a signature between now and then from the academies. What do you think? Or do you want to?
Uh, well, I definitely want to go over with you a little more because I told you I've, you've had the conversation with them and I want to make sure that everything we, you guys talked about, we have included in here and I kind of made a few assumptions about some things.
Yeah, and I think I want to have Bob look at it as well.
Yeah.
Utility.
And so my, my suggestion is, is if we go over it, um, next week sometime, uh, if it looks pretty good, then maybe we can show it to these folks, look for approval at the next meeting and also send it to the academy so that they can review it and, because I'm testing that they'll have tweaks.
Yeah. I think that sounds good.
Are there any timing issues related to getting it signed?
Um, no. They're, they're moving forward with the survey since we approved the contract amendment. So they've already got, they've had a surveyor go out, so they're starting that preliminary stage again on the alternate route just based on our contract amendment.
Right away with the counting on, on second order?
They, they will give us that after we get this.
The timing on that is not an issue.
No.
No. We'll probably be able to get to the first commissioner meeting in June is my guess, if we get this done before then.
If we have everybody approve it at the next council meeting and at the next, and then in between, yes.
Right.
Because that's June seventh, so.
Yeah. That could be the goal for us.
Right, yeah. Because it's tantamount on the academy signing the agreement. Before we go back to the commissioners. Got it. Okay. Tax abatements. We have three here. We have ACPI Products LLC. We have the Paddix LP. And we have Culver Sand Hill Farm LLC. They have been properly submitted. And
Yeah, so we need to accept those reports that they've submitted. They're required to submit these, I believe, annually.
Annually, right.
Yeah, and it, it used to be that, I think MCEDC would, um, check in with them to make sure they were doing it. Karen took care of that. Um, and all of them have done it now. So we have to accept that they've submitted the report. Uh, and then I, I don't know if they get filed with MCEDC or here at Town Hall. We'll check in with Karen on that, but um, all of them have met their requirements from what I can tell. And they have to sign, you know, the dotted line that it's truthful information that they're providing us.
So I think we should have a motion that we've accepted these
Reports.
Reports.
So I'll move with the understanding that the staff have reviewed these reports and find that they're compliant with the original intentions of the tax abatements that we have approved these reports and authorized the president to sign them on behalf of the council. From ACPI, Paddix, um, Sand Hill. Those are four, one or?
No, just the three.
Three, okay.
Still no second.
Motion's been made by Rich and segmented by Sally, um, that we've accepted and approved the, uh, tax abatement reports and, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, we have stellar information funding agreement.
Yeah, you guys approved a twenty-five hundred dollar contribution to the Crossroads Team. That agreement is from the Crossroads Team through, uh, Sean Cerisi, who does the legal work for them. And it basically says, we will provide the services of the Crossroads Team in exchange for your twenty-five hundred dollar contribution, which Karen needs for audit purposes. Um, so you already approved the funding, but you should go ahead and approve the agreement as well.
Yeah, so I need a motion to approve the agreement between the Town of Culver and Marshall County Crossroads Regional Planning Team, Inc., regarding the ongoing stellar communities implementation, implementation funding and authorize the Town Council President to sign it on behalf of Culver.
So a little point of information, careful as we do.
Yeah, it's the same form that Sean did for City Plymouth, Marshall County. It's, um, fine, I, um, I, I think I made a comment to all you all. I would have preferred to put signature lines for all of the council, not that you're not capable of signing it.
Right.
You know, when you're, you're used to the mayor signing and getting one signature and I just have a personal preference to have all the council sign, but it's, with the authorization, it's fine, I think.
Okay, so motion to be made by Bill to accept the agreement and for me to sign it. Is there a second? Sally, segmented by Sally. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Stellar Plan Update.
Uh, we don't have any new updates since the last one. Amber will have an update under the Park Department for our regional stellar project in the parks. But outside of that, uh, we don't currently have any other updates.
Town Manager Report.
Um, okay. And I gave you a long one, but I'll just give you the highlights of the things that I need you to take action on. Um, filled you in on the electrical vehicle charging station. We've been in touch with Leah Phil from May God. Bob's crew, a couple of them took the installation class so we could do the install in-house. So we'll keep an eye on that. They're expecting these to arrive in about six weeks. Um, for the community crossings matching grant, we'll be getting started on that soon. This is an NDOT grant. You guys know we've done other community crossing grants for paving, so it works the same way. We're estimating getting done early June around the eighth for that project that involves several roads in the town that are under grant. We do have much for that with our own paving budget. Just wanted to update you on that since that one's been around for a while. State Road ten, as you can tell, is under construction. So far, things are going fairly smoothly with, uh, Reef Riley. They've been doing a good job. We haven't had businesses complaining or anything. Uh, they were great about getting the storage unit owner. He had a moving truck coming in the day they were cutting the right of way. So, um, they acted quickly to help him get that vehicle in there. Um, as you know, Lake Max, uh, Trail Phase Two, we're still waiting on the new eight-foot design. I checked in with Mike yesterday. They weren't quite ready yet, so hopefully we'll see that still in the next couple of days. Uh, Lake Max Phase Three, Jim just covered that with the agreement. Uh, we're working on that. Uh, Slaton Jefferson Street Trail. Um, this is, uh, another NDOT project and it's under preliminary design right now. That usually is three to six months for environmental and survey and all of that. So once we get that, we'll probably contact people on that route and do a public information meeting. Uh, Lakeshore Drive Rain Garden, Jim updated the contract for that rain garden. Uh, Mr. Reds was supposed to come in today and sign, but he hasn't been in. It has to be done with a notary. Julie Cowell has that, so we're good when he does come in and I'll remind him tomorrow because he may have forgotten. Um, but that should be completed in the next day. And then Jim, I'll send you a scanned copy of that once. And then Jim, I'll send you a scanned copy of that once we get it signed.
I have a question on, on the Jefferson Trail. Okay, the work that's being done now, is that part of the, is that going to be part of the trail? Is it included, or is it going to be a totally separate project?
Yeah, it's, what you're seeing, it, it's part trail, part sidewalk. So on one side of the road, it's sidewalk. On the side of Sand Hill and the housing development, coming down the road towards the opposite side of the road of CBS, which would be what, the north side? That's a wider sidewalk. It's still considered really a sidewalk project, but that was part of our stellar planning. So along with State Road 10, Bill, those were two trail projects as part of the stellar plan. So I gave you the rain garden. I'm gonna skip the department reports, since they're all going to be reported anyway. I do need to let you know that Benjamin Smith, who's an operator at the sewer plant, passed his item water operator certification exam. This comes with a 25 cent raise per our policy, which would be effective on the next paycheck, so we'd like to get a motion to approve of that raise for his certification.
Motion been taken twice, all opposed, same sign, motion carries.
As I noted in the downtown that we had a seller, the seller's agreement, you know, who takes care of the downtown beds, and this is not the snow removal contract. This is the beds in downtown Culver. We did get a, a new invoice from them, looking for a motion to approve that at $3,609.65.
So moved.
That's pretty much the same agreement we've had.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made by Bill H. and segmented by Sally to approve the seller's maintenance downtown for $3,609.65. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Four, one.
All right, um, just an update. We had someone who asked us in the last meeting about a doctor in Culver.
Right.
It did reach out to Chad Towner and Eric Hassle. Chad is looking into what the recruiting, recruiting plan is for Culver. He hasn't gotten back to me on that. He did offer to come and meet with the council if you guys would like to meet with him or have him on the agenda for a regular meeting.
And who's Chad?
Chad Towner's the CEO of St. Joe Hospital. Eric's the hospital administrator.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Chad is over the whole St. Joe system throughout St. Joe and Marshall County. I wonder too, if, if connected with that, we might ask him if they might want to do some type of educational presentation in terms of really the healthcare delivery model today. I mean, nurse practitioners are, are really a very vital component of that. I know that that was a concern in this particular case, including shortage of physicians, and as that moves forward, I think it may be beneficial that either in that, if we're doing a work session or a special session, or we're going to invite him to come in or do something, it might be off to, to present the sort of the state of the art of the healthcare delivery system and what that model looks like today, and assure people the educational backgrounds that the nurse practitioners have and their, and their competency.
Do you guys prefer to do that at a regular meeting, or do you want me to see if he prefers a work session, depending on his schedule?
I would prefer a work session, so that we really have more time to devote to the issue. I think that's a good idea.
Sounds fine.
So that probably make his schedule even more flexible. I'll get like a set of dates from him and then reach out to you guys to see what you can do in front of it, and have Karen advertise after that.
Again, depending upon how he wants to handle it, I, I mean, I suggest we give a lot of, a lot of coverage to that. Maybe we might even do it someplace up at the park where we can accommodate larger groups, if he really wants to do that type of presentation.
I think that's a good idea, Rich, like the Beach Lodge or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not a total void right now. Right, I mean, there's something there.
Yeah, yeah, and it's, it is really consistent with the, again, the healthcare delivery model you're seeing across the country. And it's not a, you know, it's not a second-class stadium.
So they have a workforce shortage like everyone else, it sounds like, in many ways.
And, and yes.
Yeah.
But I think the nurse practitioners, and I, I know many of them, and I get healthcare services from, from many of them, I think are very well-trained and very competent.
Yeah.
And it's, it's something that's, you know, the same model exists in St. Joe County, which, you know, is a larger hospital, more physicians up there, but it's a very prevalent model, so.
Okay, well, I will talk to him about a work session, get back to you guys on some potential dates, and we'll work out advertising in the Beach Lodge. All right, the next thing I had was Bob had been looking into getting the downtown clock fixed. This is kind of a specialty thing. It's really hard to find companies that do it. He did some research, kept running out of luck, eventually connected with someone at Culver Academies. They use Smith's bell and clock. So you talk to them about repairing the clock. Basically, they take the interior guts out, take it off-site. They replace pieces, they bring it back, and eventually all four faces of the clock will work again. He got a quote for that, and he wants approval for $4,550. There is a fund that was set up when the clock was first installed. We had some donors who won, wanted to make sure it was maintained properly, so the funds would come out of there, and Bob had talked to Karen about that. So the motion would be to approve that $4,550 to be spent out of that fund.
How much is in that fund, do we know?
I don't know.
I think, and Virgil Schaefer was, was Virgil Schaefer the one that raised the money to do this? That's what I remember.
Yeah, for some reason, I feel like there was like nine or 10,000
Okay.
originally, and we had enough, Bob had raised enough through redevelopment commission and council to pay for the clock, but then that was set up as the maintenance fund.
Maintenance.
So.
I mean, I'll move if we approve that repair agreement. I would also ask, I guess, at the time that they're here, should there be regulations about a maintenance that occurs on that? Does this one allow it to deteriorate to the point where the upfront repair cost is that expensive? So if they have an annual
Yeah, we'll talk to about that.
Yeah, because that clock has never been touched since it was put up.
It sits out there exposed to the elements.
Good point.
Yeah.
There's a one that's established to maintain that.
Yeah, there's something they can do annually to keep it from
Whatever, I mean, I don't know what's that.
Yeah, we'll definitely ask.
So Rich makes a motion, $4,500 to spend on repair of the clock. Is there a second?
Second.
Segmented by Bill Ham. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Sorry, I'm writing as I
No, no problem.
Talk. All right, so that covered that. We already did unsafe buildings, so you pretty much got through everything I needed you to get through, and the rest will be covered under department reports.
Okay. Most talented department head reports. EMS, Jeff's not here.
My report from EAMX.
Fire.
I really don't have anything to report. We have guys in training now, and when they get done, I'll report to you who they are and what they're doing.
Thank you. Police, lean, leftists, and
Yeah, you said nothing.
Nothing. Good. Park.
Um, okay, so about five special event permits, so bear with me. The first is for Saturday, May 29th. It's the St. Mary's of the Lake Nights at Columbus Candy Drive. Same as usual, Academy Road and Lakeshore and Main Street and Jefferson, pretty straightforward. It's from 8:00 AM to noon. Saturday, May 29th.
May 29th.
Construction, we finished on What's the drive at that point?
Genuinely don't know.
Probably close, but yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I can give them the heads up, but
We may want to move them downtown if it's not done by then, and then we could talk to them about it.
Yeah, this was pretty much the only weekend that, around all the other ones that we have and other bigger events, this was pretty much the only weekend, so.
I think we'll be close, because we're looking at end of month for it, but we could always ask them to move downtown if that's not done, because that rain garden is going to be going on too, which could potentially keep it the way it is longer than we expect.
Next, I have, on June 19th, the decimal 5K run and one-mile fun walk. This is with, at the Culver Union Township Public Library. It's a course through town, the same as the lesson within a backpack course. I think that's all the important information. It doesn't require any road closures or anything like that.
Do you guys want to go ahead and do a, do a one at a time?
Let's do them one at a time.
Okay, here's the first one. Candy Drive.
Motion to approve the St. Mary's of the Lake Nights at Columbus Candy Drive on May 29th. Motion made by Bill C. and selected, segmented by Sally. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
All right, next is the 5K one-mile fun walk on behalf of the Culver Union Township Public Library.
That's on June 19th, the Dewey Decimal 5K Run. Motion been made by Rich and segmented by Sally. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
The next is the cemetery walk, which is also a library program and an outdoor event on Saturday, September 18th. Same as always, for the most part, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. I believe you have all the other information from them. Yeah.
Motion to approve the cemetery walk from the library on Saturday, September 18th, from 1:00 to 3:00. Is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Bill Ham. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Segmented by Rich. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign.
Motion carries. On that one again, the township is aware of that too, or are you, if that's going through the cemetery, is she involved in that?
Yeah, they, they are aware of it.
Okay, good.
The next is the golf cart poker run on behalf of the Good Neighbors of Culver. This is the fundraiser to support the Culver Youth Club. To be completely honest, I don't even know if it's required of them to do this, since most of it's on private property, but they just do it to get it as official approval, so. Because it doesn't require insurance or anything, since it's all
It's winged.
Yeah.
So it's nothing, it's all private?
It's all, yeah, they, you essentially drag your golf cart to these different homes and locations in Culver, and yeah, they're riding the golf carts on the streets, is really.
Motion to approve the golf cart poker run on August 14th, from 2:00 to 8:00 PM. So moved.
Second.
Motion been made by Bill A., Bill C. and segmented by Sally. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Uh, the next is the burger battle, so this was brought forth on behalf of the, the Lakes Magazine. This is just their, having people register and come to the park and compete in a burger battle, and each participant, so I don't, I have the insurance from the Lakes Magazine, but each person that registers has to provide, obviously provide their own registration, similar to what we do with Winter Fest and all the sculptures that are sponsored, same thing there. So this is on June 25th, 2021, from 3:00 to 4:00 PM, and the plan is to just pick judges out of the crowd, and whoever wins gets a free advertisement, advertisement and feature in the Lakes Magazine. And then, and another important note is they did get approval from the Health Department as well.
So, motion to approve the burger
Yes, in the park, yeah.
Burger batty, battle on Friday, June 25th, 2021. Their motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion been made by Bill Ham to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bill Clevinger. All those in favor say aye. All those, same sign, motion carries.
Okay, so that includes our special event for the summer, as of right now. I'm sure we'll get some more. As Jenny had said, I, I do have an update for the regional seller project, the Culver Park Playground and Event Space. I had met with a few stakeholders on behalf of the projects, including like the Culver Farmer's Market, the Train Depot, and then also taking the public survey responses from the fall 2020. I've met with Troy Group two or three times now, and these are the designs, the preliminary designs, and you can pass around, and budget that we're looking at currently. I just submitted all of that to Shannon, who will then be taking, uh, taking over and using the preliminary design to conduct the environmental review and start the grant application process, which is all part of our match, and then once we go through all that, we'll do procurement so that we can have those funds to purchase items that Ocre wouldn't be able to.
How long should this take, this process take? Shannon have an idea?
Jenny would have a better idea, but I do believe, yeah.
Six months. Her goal would probably be to get it in before the end of the year, the application.
Yeah, it would kind of have to be.
Environmental takes three or four months, and then preliminary design being done is helpful, but she, she ends up waiting on documents during the environmental review. So she normally tells her clients three to six months, and it usually lands more around six months.
So I see a figure at the bottom of that page. Is that what the grant would be, or is it?
That's for grant administration, so this is just the application process where you submit it. She would submit, I'll have to talk to her, usually she has a small fee for submitting the application itself. Sometimes she'll do it hoping you pick her as the administrator, then what, so Ocre still, even though we've won stellar at the regional level, they still have to award each individual project, and each individual project still has to go through the normal application cycle. So Shannon would be submitting that application for us. Ocre would give an award letter, and then you would actually start procurement for your grant administrator and your designer. So even though Troy did the preliminary design, you could end up picking someone else. They get scored, and usually your scoring committee will have Amber, your town manager, your president of town council. Some projects, you have the attorney, because it's, you know, complicated or a different type of project. If it were a utility project, you'd have Bob Porter scoring it, and then once they get scored, they get awarded the grant dollars. But by going through procurement, the grant money can pay those people, so the local funds can be used to pay for things that Ocre won't pay for, and they won't pay for anything that's mobile, like a chair, so if
Anything that's not permanent, basically.
Yeah, if it's not
Tables.
Stuck to the ground, like playground equipment, the grant will pay for that, but it won't pay for, say, a bench or bushes or
And, and the mansion dollars from the grant are coming?
Yeah, our, what our match, we're, we're, yeah, we have a
The town has a 20% match.
So it's from the town or CRC or?
Town.
Town, yeah. So that's kind of where we're at on that. Right now, the plan is, like Jenny said, fall, we're kind of about fall, public hearing. The goal is to break ground in the spring of 2022, 2022, but keep you guys posted on that. Other than that, our new floors in the Beach Lodge got started yesterday in the downstairs. They Got most of it done today, but it'll be completed by tomorrow is the plan, so uh the new flooring is going in. Um all of our peers are installed. Uh I would say about seventy-five percent of our foot lifts have been installed at this point too, so. Looking pretty good on the end of things as well with our boat slip rentals. And yeah, thank you guys for clarifying everything with the save a lot of hassle with the clarification as well today.
And you've got a hundred percent. Boat slips sold, don't you?
Oh, yeah, a hundred percent, yeah, absolutely. Boat slips, jet skis, kayak rack with a waiting list on everything, so. Uh yeah.
That could be the Stellar um plan. Is there a water component to this, or? And any of the play equipment is there?
No, there's not.
No water slides?
No, no, the slides you see are just built into that west hill there. Uh they'll just bring it back a bit and then add the slides in.
One thing we'll have to do during budget season is figure out where we want that twenty percent to come from. We can budget it. It'll take, once she submits the application and we're awarded. You have twelve months to complete the project unless you extend it, which you don't really want to extend it with Okra, and then it's eighteen months. So we'll need to look at this year's budget to pay for it next year.
But that number there plus the administrative costs.
That's the, yeah, that's the total.
Total for everything.
Yeah, and we would be twenty percent of that.
Yep.
Yes, correct. That's all I've got.
Thank you very much. Bob on for utilities, or?
Um no.
Nope.
So Bob, you're not on the call, right? I think he had given me his two things he wanted to then. Clock, so.
Okay, we'll move on to boards and commission reports. Plan Commission. Anyone here from the Plan Commission?
I'll take that.
Okay, sure. Sure, Chuck.
Just uh want to tell you because you don't always get to see. Who's working and who's not when it comes to the Plan Commission, the B Z A. Our Plan Commission is the most active uh in the whole county. Things that come before them, what they work on, trying to work ahead and take care of things. We have a very active Plan Commission. Our B Z A um we have six cases coming up. For next month. Six cases for this month, I'm sorry. And that is a lot of cases. Our uh B Z A President, Dan Adams, is outstanding.
Right.
He does a great job, controls the meeting, sets the tone in the direction, and it does an outstanding job. And for both of these units, very thankless jobs. They're always being criticized and for what they do and what they don't do. Their pay is totally zero. And um I wish there was a point that we could pay them, but these guys do a great job. I just want you to know that. They're very active and doing what they um set out to do.
Thanks a lot, Chuck. And just so everyone knows, Plan Commission will meet, the next meeting is six thirty P M on Tuesday, May the eighteenth. And B Z A is uh six thirty P M on Thursday, May twentieth.
Can you come and just report, you echoed something, Josh, we did something Jonathan said in terms of changing the fees or the variances?
Yes, so I think Jonathan and Chuck may have discussed changing, there's a hundred dollar fee for a variance. But by the time you process it and do all the advertising and the work on that, we're not breaking even. So Jonathan, before he left, noted that he thinks we should change that fee to a hundred fifty or two hundred dollars. I'd probably defer to Chuck on what that should be since I haven't processed these myself yet. But it's definitely something, if we're going to do that, we have to schedule, I believe, a public hearing to raise that fee. So if you guys want to do that, we'll put that in the works, get an advertisement out through Karen. And figure out when to put it into the council meeting, if you're interested in doing that.
I suggest we go ahead and do that. If we know right off the bat that it's underfunded right now. I mean, I think that we could move forward with it. I know attending some recent meetings, um besides the staff time involved, legal counsel involved, our own legal counsel involved. Not inexpensive operations.
Yeah.
Chuck, you have a comment?
The only comment that I would have is that each person that applies for a variance or to go before the Plan Commission is a citizen. Of this jurisdiction. And so therefore they're paying taxes along the line that we take into our town. So if it's our goal to make money or get ahead on this, I say raise it. You know, if not, then I I think it should be something to be considered. Do I care? It it makes no difference, but it's just something that I think the the council should consider.
I mean, I think it's like a user fee though, isn't it? I mean, it's like a building permit fee in a sense. Um you know, everybody in town owns a property taxes, maybe paying property taxes, but we do charge a a fee for um they're getting a. Um a building permit, uh you know, and this is a variance. You know, it's, I I don't think we should be making money on it, but I don't think we should be losing uh money on the, it's just my personal opinion.
Having been uh Marshall County Building Commissioner for the last ten years, I can tell you this. Their building permit fees don't cover their costs either.
Kevin?
Just a comment to echo Chuck. Every single building permit or B Z A variance adds add more value. It's more taxes coming in because you have approved those properties. So just by the fact that they're doing something, they are contributing to the community that way in tax dollars. So different tax dollars coming in.
Tree Commission, anyone here from Tree Commission?
I have a question on the tree commission. I was approached by Mrs. Kelly up on College Avenue. And I did talk to Bob Porter, but I I'm kind of at a loss. Um do we have an active tree commission?
Yes.
Okay, do they have any money?
We do fund them, yes.
Okay, she has a stump. When they cut the tree down in front of her house. She has a stump that's sitting up about two inches, and it was a large tree. And she's asked me to find out whether, you know, someone on the tree commissioner, whoever's responsible for it. And get these people back to grind that stump down because it is a hazard.
So the tree commission removed the tree?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
What was her name again?
Marilyn Kelly.
Marilyn Kelly.
On College.
I can look into it for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Clerk's report.
There is no clerk's report because you guys have covered everything that Karen wanted us to cover through the agenda.
Good. Attorney's report.
Um I don't have much. I shared an email with all of you about uh four fifteen Lake Shore. Uh talked about Abysspo. Uh we Jenny's talked about some of the other things I'm working on, so uh. I I don't think I have anything.
Sounds good. Anyone here for a utility shut off or a ordinance violation? Hearing or seeing none? Let's move on to uh citizen input. Any citizen input, if so?
Tom Yuhas.
Stand up, state your name and input, please.
Tom Yuhas.
Hearing or seeing none?
Hello.
We'll move on to council issues.
Hello.
Rich?
Just a question for Jenny. Um you want to summarize anything on the meetings of the economic development? I mean, um Cheryl was here.
Yeah.
Um on Monday and just.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Overall or general plan on where we're going to.
Yes, um so Cheryl did some brainstorming about next steps and um we also had a lunch with her afterwards with Karen Schuman. Um and Bill, and next steps are to figure out who should be on that alliance from a stakeholder standpoint. We discussed several names and organizations, including county. Um and then Cheryl's going to work on an agenda for bringing those people together. And we're going to take a look at what's on that agenda. I'll float it by all the council members and redevelopment. Um and maybe some other folks and kind of look at what we're going to do at that first meeting. We were talking about a June timeframe, but we want to, we're we're kind of leaning toward a Monday or a Tuesday because busy season kicks in for the business owners. End of week is crazy for them. Fridays, you know, restaurant owners, retail shops get really busy. So we'll engage several business owners, develop Culver Main Street Chamber redevelopment. Uh and bring everyone to that first meeting, but.
Our funding commitment extends through, I guess, how much should either council and or CRC agree? And where will that take us with the meetings with Cheryl?
Yeah, on her contract, um pretty much until we get to the point of having a a plan developed. She won't actually write an entire plan. I mean, that would have cost us a lot more money, but she'll guide us through it. So I'm guessing through the rest of the calendar year at least. Uh she was, you know, very open to however many times it takes. She thinks that particular group should meet at least once a month. Like every thirty days or so. Um and she did sort of lean toward making it a volunteer group versus a formalized. Nonprofit and the whole bit. So a lot like what we did with Stellar, a collaborative group. But with a focus on economic development planning process.
Uh someone online does have Susan, but, okay.
Hi, it's Tom Yuhas.
Hello.
We have to unmute you.
Hello, try it again. Hello.
Yeah.
Tom, go ahead, see if it.
Yeah, do you hear me now?
Oh, it's not working.
I'm unmuted on my my end.
Yeah, let me try to unmute this one and see.
Sorry, Tom.
That's okay.
Try it now, Tom.
Hello, do you have me?
No.
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 Here, maybe if I log on on here. Then we can listen on here.
If he wants to call.
Here, I'll just join.
The weird thing is, is he's unmuted on here.
Yeah, I'm unmuted on my end too.
Yeah, everyone online can hear it. Tom, try talking now.
Do you hear me now?
So I can try this.
I'm talking now, but nobody hears me. Maybe the online people do. Hello, girl. Oh, hello.
We can hear you.
Oh, okay.
The online people hear you.
Okay, is town council with me?
Yes, we are.
Yes.
Okay, um I tried to get in at citizen input, but it didn't work, so um just a pointed clarification. The audio was poor during the presentation with the boat slip request. What was the, what was the length of the boat that the gentleman was requesting?
It was, it was twenty-four feet, Tom.
Twenty-four feet, four inches, Tom.
Twenty-four feet?
Twenty-four feet and four inches.
Okay, I I don't have a boat anymore, but the twenty seventeen uh contract, was it changed? It it used to be twenty-seven feet.
Yeah, in two thousand nineteen, everyone that had a boat that was uh twenty-four feet or longer was grandfathered in. Beyond two thousand nineteen, um we did not accept any boats that were twenty longer, twenty-four feet and one inch or longer.
Okay, all right. I just was curious because I wasn't sure what the length he said was, but. I remember it being twenty-seven feet. I pulled out an old contract and it was indeed twenty-seven. I did not realize that you changed it. Thank you for your time.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else online wants to, any citizen input?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Fingernails on the top.
Okay, um. I'm not trying to capture the meeting, but I do have three things. Uh number one, um I I've talked to Bill and I've said to Jenny. I'd like to see us put a couple of ceiling fans in here, low profile ceiling fans to move the air. I don't think it's going to be such an undertaking that we've got a get a special appropriation, but additional appropriation, but. I I think coming into, yeah, but coming into summer, I I think that um, you know, seeing the air does come down. Um or it comes from above, maybe a couple of low profile ceiling fans um would work. Uh second thing is Jenny, uh I've been substituting um and will volunteer to continue to substitute. Until you feel ready um on burden on the county, on safety committee. I'm I'm willing to stay on um. Until a time that you feel that that's one less thing in your plate. Okay, and the last thing is, is that uh I I do wish that uh we're able to um address the water problem on Main Street. I I talked to one store owner and she was kind of upset that uh when she sent her emails, that nobody got back to her, but. Um I've uh I've I've looked at that situation. I'm not an expert in this, but. It seems funny that water's coming in from the front from one place, it's coming in from the side from the other. And I I think that these, I don't know whether there's anything that we can do, but I think it's something we ought to look into.
Yeah, I talked to Bob and he um. We don't have pipes under there, so we know it's not that. We don't have basins under there. Uh he did clean out basins further up from there. He believes the water's coming in through the carst property and just traveling down. We do have an ordinance where you can't cause water runoff on a property, but I don't know about within a building.
I mean, it's, the problem is not just finding people's merchants there. I know the bank building has terrible problems there, and that's, I mean, further north. And I don't know, and I think that's for a long time.
And maybe it's because it is just off surface there. We don't have anything catching it. It's literally surface water.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what the problem is either, but I I do think that um maybe ultimately it's not our cost to fix, but in terms of exploring. Helping to find out what the problem is.
Yeah, I thi- I think what we really need is dialogue.
Do you think we should have an engineer look at it or someone?
I think it'd be worth having somebody.
Sullivan?
Yeah.
I mean.
I mean, Bob had said that there.
Oh, no, I mean, yeah.
Has anybody been in the uh asked to go into the carst building? And see.
I don't know. I know Mike, Mike Grover and Bob both looked at. The properties they were in that were getting affected. But I don't know if they've been in the carst building.
I think, yeah.
I know they've been in the basements of the other buildings because Mike Grover and Bob have kind of explored it. Um and you know, Bob's theory is they need to waterproof the properties. But if it's coming from another property that has a leak issue of some sort. You know, maybe we can ask to enter that property and take a look.
That's all I have, Bill.
I think Bob is out the rest of this week, but I will.
He is out the rest of this week.
I'll give Mark Sullivan a call and I'll go down and look at it and take notes and see what kind of questions we might have for Mark. You know, if there's something else we can look into. We're, obviously we'd have to pay. I think Mark would come as a consultant, but I don't think he'll just travel up and take a look for no reason.
Well, we got, we got him looking, when we delve into the well. He will check while he's looking at that, take a look at this.
Yeah, he's not with Peerless, but he is with Midwestern.
Right, that, but we're going to have to do engineering on that.
Like a prove a certain amount with a cap to have him come take a look at both of those.
Well, let's see how, let's see. Well, let's see how, let's see what Peerless tells us first, as to whether or not the the aquifer is sufficient enough to put a well in. I think that's what we're contacting Peerless about.
I mean, maybe a home conversation with Mark, explaining the problem and showing some of the fixtures and giving them a little bit of history, and then see what, either what he would charge, do an assessment of the problem or.
Yeah.
Proposals, look at it, so you have some idea of what it might be on the front. But I I agree with Bill. I think you should help identify what.
Right.
Sally?
I don't have anything to.
That says?
Yeah.
I agree with that. Bill?
I had two things. One is I think we need two or three more of these because this seems to be a chronic problems with the hearing of the people that are online. And the other thing is, it goes into the wind field, the east end, there's a manhole cover that's been leaking for three weeks. And it goes down the street, and it goes down in my conduit and out to the lake. And I know the lake is low, but we don't need to be filling the city water. And someone called the city hall, I don't know who they called. But uh, three weeks ago, and no one's been out yet.
Hmm.
And it's coming out of that manhole down in front of Harney's.
Right.
And uh, it just keeps trickling down there. I think it's probably a, you know, gallon every half hour.
Right, well, we need to.
End of Winfield Street, okay.
Yeah, the east, the east end, the last manhole.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, okay.
That's all I have.
Maybe I can have Curtis look at it since he's not here.
Did you know that was your job, just to go out and fix it? I can't even lift the manhole cover. It weighs about a hundred pounds. Finger in the dink. Yeah, right.
I'll ask Curtis to look at it tomorrow.
Okay.
I think the only thing I've got is that Jenny and myself and Paul are gonna get down to India this week and. Meet the folks of MPa and talk about the electric utility and. Well, see their dog and hear their dog and pummy show. So we're gonna do that.
So I'll be gone Thursday.
Yeah.
But I'll jump on this tomorrow.
I see the U S Treasury has come out with the regulations for the American Rescue Plan money, but you guys are getting it through the state, so I don't know what the state's plan is to.
Right.
Get their money, but uh. It's apparently out there to get if you can manage the portal, so.
Right. Jenny, you have anything else? Is there, is there nothing else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Okay, wait, did you hear this last motion?
No, because you chewed on it.
Was that Sally and Bill? Okay. Spaced out for a minute. Trying to make sure I get all the motions in here.